Thank you so much for coming to this public hearing for the Phoenix Charter School request for renewal to order. I'm going to explain the process for tonight. We run a really tight ship and we have many comments that people would like to make. So, we have, we don't have enough time. We have 30 minutes, which is longer than we normally do for public comment. So, we just want you to know that you can always submit your comments to us via email. And all of our emails are on the website. So, please do that. We want to hear what you have to say. So, we're going to follow the normal process for what we do for our regular meetings on public comment. Each speaker is reminded that you have two minutes to speak. Out of respect for all people wishing to participate, please honor that timeframe. I know you may want to go on and I understand that, but if you take too long, somebody else isn't going to be able to say anything at all. So, please honor the two minute. A timer will appear and you'll hear it, you'll see it, and you'll be able to know that your two minutes are up. Also, Assistant Principal Superintendent Michelle Nie will be telling who is next on deck. So, she'll give you a reminder so that you can be ready when the previous speaker is winding up. I'm just seeing here. We also will be monitoring Zoom if we have time, which I don't think we will, but we'll try to get our Zoom comments in as well. Now, the other thing is Kristin Miles from the Oregon School Boards Association, who is facilitating the Charter School renewal process for the district and the charter, is attending via Zoom. And she will explain specific Oregon State statute pertaining to this public hearing. So, thank you for joining us, Kristin. Hello. Following her announcement, Assistant Superintendent Nie will proceed with announcing each speaker and person on deck. The other thing I want to remind you of, and I'll probably tell you this a couple more times, is this hearing, this is our hearing, and we're requesting this and giving more time than normal, is the place to talk about your comments. So, after this, we'll have our regular business meeting. That is not the time to bring up Phoenix issues. That is specific to this meeting. So, if you don't get to say your mind, your piece, please email us. And so, welcome, Kristin. Take it away and explain everything you need to about the statute.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. As you said, I'm Kristin Miles, Board Director, or Director of Board Development for OSBA. I have been working with the district gathering information from the Charter School to facilitate the renewal process. So, this is the public hearing related to the renewal. It is required under ORS 3380655C. The hearing is meant to gather input from the public on the renewal request from the Charter School. No decisions are made tonight. It is simply to gather information. So, you described the process. That is the only thing that the hearing is meant for tonight. And so, the board will hear input from the public on the request for renewal. And after the hearing, if you want to turn it over to me for a second, then I can go over next steps.
Thank you so much, Kristin. Michelle, if you want to take it away, please.
All right. Just a reminder again about our process, and there will be a timer that will be showing on the screen for the two minutes. At the end of the two minutes, there is an alarm that will go off. At that time, please say thank you and end your comments, because the next person who was on deck will be coming up to speak. I will call out the order, so you will know when you are going to be up next. So, we are going to start with Jackie Pratt and Rick Wiesenberg will be on deck.
Good evening. In 1989, 81, I was sitting on that side of this table. And as a school board member, I was very involved in the education of our children. I met two friends, Vicky Morgan and Tommy Nyhart, and they were talking about needing to start a school situation in which children with learning disabilities could flourish. I joined them because at that point, there were three of us then in that conversation who had a learning disability. I'm dyslexic and I have no idea what the other two were. We, the three of us talked and they decided they were going to go for it and they were going to start a school where the learning of the elderly, learning disabled kids, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Oh, dear. The many ways in which our learning disabled enhanced our ways of being in the world like I saw a new way of teaching. And so, that way of teaching is the basic premise of the school. Find your own voice, value your own self and all of its uniqueness, and honor others for the same. I have a little story to tell you of my experience as a person at Phoenix. We were in the old building downtown. I was teaching for someone else, and there was a class of about eight, nine kids. Two of them were brand-new boys doing what they were doing, which is why they were in Phoenix. I'm sorry if that's the end of me. That's the end of the story. I'm very sorry.
Just for two minutes, thank you.
We, actually, we need to stick to the format that we have.
Okay. I'm sorry. So, anyway, the boys were going on, and so a girl raised her hand and I pointed her and she stood up and she said to the boys facing them, "I have to clean motel rooms and scrub toilets in order to be able to come to this school, and I need you to be quiet so I can learn what Jackie's trying to teach us." And I said, "Thank you," and she sat down. And I saw in those boys' eyes, clear into their hearts, they were in a new place. They were not going to be, I think I'll just stop there. They were in a new place, and now they were looking for how to be in that place. And that place was Phoenix.
After Rick Wiesenberg, we have Brandon Bishop on deck and Mr. Wiesenberg with the additional for Ms. Pratt. It's a minute and 30 seconds that you have.
Understood. Perfect. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to speak. So, Phoenix School has become a critical, critical part of the Roseburg School District. Phoenix School has become a critical part of Roseburg. Phoenix School has become a critical part of Douglas County. These, these kids, for whatever reason, must, must, must be given the opportunities that they are given at Phoenix to continue to learn, to continue to successfully complete high school, and many are going to successfully to UCC. That is, Phoenix has become an imperative part of our community and of our county. And if Phoenix School's charter is not renewed, which you have the prerogative to do, I fully understand, but if Phoenix Charter is not renewed, it will be, it will be individually devastating to these kids, and it will actually be individually, it will be devastating to the Roseburg School District. You will, you will in fact be doing a disservice to the people that elected you to this board. And so, I urge you, I urge you to consider renewing the charter. There are all sorts of things that we can do, we can, we can, terms we can come to, things we can negotiate, things we can agree to, all sorts of, you know, new paradigms that we can, can figure out for the charter going forward, and we're absolutely willing to do any of that. But I urge you, please do not close Phoenix, Phoenix School and by eliminating its charter. Thank you.
Sarah Markle, you will be on deck.
In my profession, the word malpractice is an inflammatory and sensitive word. The definition of malpractice is dereliction of professional duty and a failure to exercise an accepted degree of professional skill or learning by someone rendering services. Phoenix is a school that has 21% of students that attend regularly, 11% of students who claim to be going to college despite being what they state is a college prep school, and 30% on-time graduation. Oregon as a state has 81%. Phoenix has repeatedly set goals and failed to meet such goals miserably. They have not served their students appropriately or adequately. If they did, they would have met their own self-determined goals. They have continued to fail year after year. They have, they make the argument that their students have lower socioeconomic status, disabilities, and are more underserved. I'm not going to argue that, but I am going to point out that RPS has the same students. RPS also serves those students so much better. RPS could absorb every student that goes to Phoenix, and they would get a much better education with a higher chance of graduating on time and be more prepared for their best futures. The most glaring and damning data is the Every Student Succeeds Act Accountability Sheet. Phoenix is at a level one out of five across all areas in terms of student groups and all content areas. That means they are at a level one in English Language Proficiency, four-year graduation cohort, ninth grade on-track cohort, regular attendance, math, and English Language Arts. There is no lower level to which they can fall. They have been a level one for the entire contract. This is astounding and concerning, and in my professional opinion represents educational malpractice. They have shown no growth when they are already as low as the system can rate someone. If we think about a bell curve, they're on the far, far left of that bell curve where growth is very easy to achieve, yet they remained in level one in all areas since the beginning of their current agreement. I asked the school board to not renew the contract with Phoenix. The performance of Phoenix is an embarrassment. Our community as a whole suffers when students are not supported and challenged. Don't let them continue performing educational malpractice. Thank you.
No.
We will refrain from unkind comment.
After Sarah Markle, Marie Leary will be on deck.
Thank you. My family just moved to Roseburg two years ago, and prior to Roseburg, my children went to a school with only 120 students from kindergarten through 12th grade. The idea of coming to a school that was over 10x the amount of students for the high school was terrifying for my autistic teenager. My son started Phoenix scared of everyone he saw, and in just a few short weeks, he started making friends. He started speaking to teachers that he never would have spoken to before. And he has grown immensely because he feels welcome and he feels accepted. And because of that, he will be graduating at the end of this year. I also have an eighth grader who has severe behavioral difficulties, and she did attend a Roseburg School last year and was labeled a problem student and was told she would face expulsion. At Roseburg, or at Phoenix Charter School, they've accepted her despite her behaviors, and they have allowed her to grow as a person. They've helped her with math. She is unable to understand how numbers work, and because of the attention of the teachers at Phoenix, she is beginning to understand those numbers now. She no longer cries every morning before going to school. We are very grateful to Phoenix Charter School for allowing our kids a place to belong where they're not scared to go. They're not afraid of the sheer amount of people in one building. That is, that is all I have.
Amanda Torado, you will be on deck.
Hey, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and supporting us. I hope that the board sees we have these great pins, and they're more available at the front for you. My name's Marie Leary. I worked for Roseburg School District for some time and now work as Dean of Students at Phoenix Charter School. And I am tasked today with reading to you a few letters from students who understood the assignment and wanted to show their support. Dear board members, I know it's my first year at Phoenix, but it's already made a difference for me. I have a lot of mental health problems, and I've not been successful in school, but it's different here. The teachers care and they want to help. They, they understand us. They work really hard to help everyone. I have less mental health issues because I feel supported by the staff. Everyone cares about this school. It has made a lot of people's lives better. Every day I come to school and kids have smiles on their faces because they're happy to be here. A lot of us haven't felt that way about school, so it's a big deal. Phoenix needs to stay open. People that struggle come here to get help they need. There are a lot of class choices, and it's a great school. In the end, they want students to be successful in school and life. Most schools, like most schools, the teachers really care about you and they were in the work that you do. But at Phoenix, they also help with mental health issues that many students have. Sincerely, Megan Smith, 10th grade.
My name is Kira Lakely, and I'm a sophomore at Phoenix Charter School. Since COVID-19, I have struggled with grades and serious depression. At Phoenix, my grades have improved significantly. I have the opportunity for better one-on-one with teachers, getting help here and motivate, and the motivation I need. Our school presents many opportunities for students, like college help, job help opportunities. Thank you so much. I have toppings. I'd like to give some.
Jillian Wiesenberg will be on deck.
Good evening. My daughter Teresa goes to Phoenix, and before she went there, she did go to Roseburg High School, and she failed miserably. And she asked teachers repeatedly for help. They did not help her. She has a different learning style, and it was not understood anywhere else. She had never seen an A in her life until she started Phoenix for the 10th grade, and she has straight A's. I've never seen that. I've never seen the confidence in her that I see now. I've never seen the lift of depression and anxiety from her that I now see. She is excited to go to school. She is really excited to interact with all of the teachers, not just one or two, all of them. Phoenix offers some unique classes that Roseburg High just can't. They have too many kids. Like, my daughter is really excited about fencing with justice, and she's super excited about the different types of art that she's been able to do with law. She's developed different relationships with teachers, really close relationships that help her in all of the classes. She's learned to speak out in class, doesn't do it every time, but she's learning. It's a learning curve. It's kind of like a mini-college for the kids. They, they switch up the classes all the time and, and are exposed to so many different things at Phoenix that Roseburg High just cannot offer. It's too big, and kids get lost in it. My daughter sure got lost in it, and it was very frustrating. And I'm sure some of you know my name because I am very vocal and very critical of the schools here, and I will speak out when something is wrong. But I want you to know that something is very, very right with Phoenix. And if we could have a Phoenix in every town across the country, I think we should. These kids are getting the care and the support and the love that they need, and they would not get it anywhere else.
Hi. My name is Jillian Wiesenberg, and I-
Sorry, Jillian, just really quick. Ben Kenfield is on deck. Just wanted to let him know that he was-
Sure. I thought maybe I took the wrong place.
No, you're perfectly fine. I haven't started your time yet, so go right ahead.
My name is Jillian Wiesenberg. I've been on the Phoenix Board for ballpark of 10 years, probably more. I would invite all of you to come and meet the students and the families. I think you would be overly impressed. The reason I'm on the Board is because my daughter was born with the cord wrapped around her neck, lack of oxygen, had learning disabilities. At the time, I lived in Utah. She went to the University of Utah College of Nursing Preschool, and they were able to do the Denver Test, and we were able to chart a course for her. Unfortunately, in public schools, children get lost. She got lost. She couldn't spell. She could read phonetically, but we understood after a while that she didn't understand or comprehend what she was reading. We put her in a private school, and she flourished. She got 100% on spelling tests. She could read and comprehend. I wish that she had had a Phoenix School with all my heart, and I have put all my heart into this school, and it has its ups and downs, just like everything else. You know, I hear things about everywhere, you know, whether it's a public school, private school, or whatever, but I invite you to come and put your arms around the children and the families with me and to create a school that will help the children, and I'll use a pseudonym, but help children like my daughter, Suzie. And it really can happen, and it takes all of us. It takes a community, and it takes all of us to go talk to the children, go talk to the families. And if there's something we need to do better, let's all get together and do it better.
Nikki Hall will be on deck. Go right ahead, Ben.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Ben Kenfield. My family and I made the choice to move back to the Roseburg area after 10 years away, little, little under a year ago. Our son Sebastian's in the eighth grade at Phoenix School. When we moved here, we really struggled with finding a solution for him, for finding the educational environment where he could actually thrive, and, and we came close to giving up, to be honest. And then, we had a referral to try out Phoenix, and since then, other parents said it, no crying in the morning, no, you know, no anxiety about going to see. He loves his school. He feels supported. He loves his teachers. He's making friends. It's just a night and day difference. It's just something that I didn't even know we could expect. And Roseburg, you know, we're used to some, some of the bigger cities with, with a little more resources, but we found that here, and I think that sets Roseburg apart. And I know Roseburg needs to have things like that. They need, you know, this, our town, our community needs to have these kinds of options for people to, to look at and say, "See, this is a place where our family can flourish. This is a place where we can all be successful." So, I'll leave it back, that, give it back a little bit of time, but thank you.
Cory Bernard will be on deck.
Someone's going to ask me to stand up, but I think you need to know that I am standing. In June of 2020, Roseburg Interim School Board President Steve Patterson said that there's been a lot of work in this community over the years by a lot of good people, people here, that made Phoenix possible. Steve went on to say that we need to work together to make it mutually beneficial on both sides of the fence, and I wholeheartedly agree with Steve. As a classroom teacher, a community member, a former school board member, I do however believe that the five years that has presented, Phoenix has presented data to the Roseburg School District about the contract that they made with Roseburg School District. We're finding that are concerning-
Hold on just a minute. We lost you.
Hey, sorry. You may want to go back a couple of sentences because we missed-
As a classroom teacher, a former school board member, a member of this community, and somebody that believes in kids, the very fiber of my being, I believe that the five-year agreement that Phoenix has made with Roseburg School District needs to come to an end. The News Review did a article April 1st, and they talked about the improvements in Phoenix. As a matter of fact, they talked about, the headline says something like, "Phoenix School Invests in Improvements." Everything from textbooks to mirrored windows to keyless entries, but the article did not mention academic improvements. It didn't mention graduation rates, attendance improving, improved pedagogy, increased testing to evaluate students, and data that supports growth in any area for which RHS and Phoenix agreed upon in 2020. Pressure is put on public schools all the time to increase their graduation rates. Am I running out of time here? Okay. Here are some things that we hear consistently over the last five years from Phoenix. We work hard, attendance is poor, we are not at grade level, there's been little or no growth. This does not meet the standards, stronger relationships with our students, we have a big turnover, 10% of kids making 90% of, of attendance, implementing reading strategies, track in progress. I'm concerned, I'm concerned, I'm concerned. We're proud of our culture. We need to repair our culture. We are figuring out where we are and where we need to be. It's in the developmental stage, very concerning numbers, testing data can't be trusted. Our district has no business supporting failure, and everything that students need-
Nikki.
-Roseburg High School offers.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry.
Oh, you're fine. We were having technical difficulties. All right. Jason Troxell will be on deck, please. Cory, hopefully we will have better-
I got, I got a big voice.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Phoenix Charter School. This is my 15th year in education. Throughout the years of teaching, I've worked in many school districts, including the Clamath Falls City Schools, Winston Dillard, Sutherland, and Roseburg. I'm also an Associate Professor of Mathematics at Umpqua Community College. I came to Phoenix last year from Roseburg High School. During my time in these different school districts, I've worked with numerous types of students, from very high-achieving dual-credit college students to students that were struggling to even pass a very basic math course. Every student I taught has deserved the best education possible. Some of our current students at Phoenix are ones that feel overwhelmed and unsupported in those larger high schools like Roseburg, Sutherland, South Umpqua, and Douglas. At Phoenix, we are able to serve students more individually by having smaller class sizes, more one-on-one time, and by building relationships with our students that typically are not built in a regular classroom. Students who struggle with conventional learning environments may demonstrate as students with behavioral issues in those larger classrooms. At Phoenix, we are able to consider what is happening outside of the classroom and create an individualized behavior support plan to support our students. These plans allow our students time to acclimate to the educational environment while building support from trusted staff. It is not uncommon for a student to show up at Phoenix having nowhere to have slept the night before, having not showered in days, wearing dirty clothes, and going without healthy food. We support these students beyond their education by providing quiet areas for them to rest, showers, washers and dryers, and food boxes. Phoenix is not just a school, but a community that takes care of each other. Along with supporting students, we reach out to our families, and we find ways to support them, because if a student does not feel safe outside of school, they are not going to be able to focus during school. At Phoenix, we also understand that not every student can graduate on time without support. We try to offer that support.
Christy Worst, you'll be on deck.
My name's Jason Troxell. I've been a board member of Phoenix School for the previous five years. I attended Roseburg. My children attend Roseburg. I'm a little uniquely involved on both campuses. I coach sports at Roseburg, volunteer coach. I am a board member at Phoenix. I teach financial literacy volunteering at Phoenix. To say that Roseburg can offer everything that Phoenix can, it's just, it's just simply not true. If you, if any of you have been in both buildings, it's just not the same environment. Not good or bad, right? Two totally different environments. It is an incredible resource for this community and for the people that you represent. Okay? It's an incredible resource for this community and the people you represent. If an agreement to the charter needs to be changed, right? Meet with me, meet with Rick, meet with Tom Nelson, other board members, right? Let's have a conversation about that. Let's go to the school campus. Not renewing and just taking away that resource is a complete waste of that resource to this town. I would love for any of you to join us on the campus, right? Understand any communication piece that this board members would like to communicate with our board members. That would be great. I, I joined this board after the previous charter renewal, okay? And I've been here, you know, through the last four and a half years, and I totally see the frustrations that the school district may have had, right? And I understand. Bottom line, renewing this charter is what keeps this resource in this town.
Desiree Huff, you will be on deck.
Thank you for allowing me-
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm actually reading a message that a student wrote to you as she was not comfortable appearing tonight. A vital pillar for our students and community, why Phoenix Charter School must remain open. In an era where education must consistently adapt to meet the diverse needs of students, Phoenix Charter School has stood as a beacon of opportunity and success. As a valuable alternative to traditional schooling, Phoenix Charter School has not only enriched the lives of its students, but also played a critical role in strengthening our community. Closing its doors would deprive our district of a unique education, educational asset and limit the choices available to families seeking the best fit for their children's learning journeys. For the sake of equity, innovation and student success, Phoenix Charter School must remain open. A lifeline for diverse learners. Phoenix Charter School is more than just a school. It's a tailored learning environment that prioritizes individual student needs. Its flexible approach has proven invaluable for students who may not thrive in traditional settings, including those with special learning requirements, gifted students seeking advanced opportunities and those in need of a smaller, more nurturing environment. For many families, Phoenix Charter School is not just a choice, it's the best or even the only option for their child's education. Consider the success stories that have emerged from Phoenix Charter School. From students who have overcome academic struggles to those who have found passions through the school's specialized programs. The impact is undeniable. There are not just anecdotes, they are testaments to the effectiveness of personalized education. By closing this school, we risk abandoning the very students who rely on us the most. I won't be able to finish this, but I will submit it on her behalf. And I'm just wondering how many people here tonight are in support of Phoenix, if you could.
Thank you.
All right, Caleb Carlson will be on deck and just to let everyone know that after Caleb will be our final speaker for tonight because our 30 minutes is almost up.
First, I want to say thank you for giving me the time to speak tonight. My name is Desiree and to me, being at school is life-changing. I know it saved my life when I was a teen. Before my daughter came to Phoenix, sorry, she was constantly in trouble, getting kicked out of school and getting into physical altercations. She was failing every single class. When she first came to Phoenix, things were rough. But when a problem came about, the teachers and the staff knew exactly what to do and how to treat her. They did it with love, unlike the public school that just tossed her to the side and did nothing but suspend her in a stronghold. They never asked why she might be having these problems, but the Sabbath Phoenix came about in a different way. They knew there was more going on than just a bad kid. They gave us resources, resources and worked with us to give her the help she needed. Now she loves going to school, has kept her grades up and has a job. They took the time to give her the confidence and help her sign. Phoenix School is an amazing place and to close it down would hurt so my daughter and so many other students. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, this is my first time being up here. I want to apologize for the booing for the person that I come up here and had things to say about Phoenix. That is not a showing of what we are taught here at Phoenix. There's a handful of students over here that go there. We are taught to respect and to honor the opinions and what is said by other people that in our community. We are also taught to take care of one another, no matter what the other people believe. I came to Phoenix when I was a sophomore. I had many issues. I'd come from a divorced family and I did not fit in over at RHS. I had started drinking and smoking, I will say that. And at Phoenix, I, I was able to find help and comfort and I was able to quit and I've been two years clean. With that, with that, I learned many resources as well. I was able to find a great job in a staple in our community named FARA, Faith Family and Relationship Advocates. They help with many things with mental health and other resources like that. Sorry, I'm, I'm a little nervous and shaky up here. I was able to get my grades from all Fs to As. I am almost a straight A student. I have a B or two. Sorry, I'm not super great at certain things, but you know what? We all have our quirks, am I right? Anyways, what I was gonna say is, is my sophomore year, I was able to get a scholarship for my junior year over to UBC, which is one of what they say here is one of the greatest schools ever. They were not my kind of people. My kind of people are the people that will stand up for each other and will stick beside each other through rough times and through thin times. Dealing with depression, I have no idea how many, how many teachers and staff members helped me through hard times, especially during my parents' divorce at this school. That is something we need, especially when suicide rates and other things are as high as they are in our community and in communities around the nation. Thank you and I hope you folks have a great afternoon.
Just as a reminder, anyone who was not able to speak tonight, you are welcome to submit written testimony to the board and now we will turn it over to Kristin.
Yes, yes. Kristin, are you ready to come on and give your opposing remarks?
Yes, thank you. So now that the hearing is complete, the next step is I will be completing my report, which will come to the board and the superintendent as a recommendation using all of the information here, all of the information that I have been gathering. The statute says now that within 30 days or the date agreed to between the board and the charter school of the hearing, the board must vote on statutory criteria, which are listed in O R S 3380658A. And there's a list of those there. I won't read them off right now, but you are scheduled to vote on May 14th. If the charter school is approved, then after that, the district and the charter school have 90 days to negotiate a contract. If the request for renewal is denied at that point, the charter school could address the reasons for denial and appeal that decision to the, to the district at that point. So there will be more gathering and report writing between now and May 14th.
Thank you, Kristin. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. May I ask that if you're not planning to stay for this meeting, that you kind of exit quickly? Because we've got a lot of students trying to get in for the next meeting. Thank you so very much. The hearing is formally adjourned. Thank you. We're going to begin the business part of our meeting. Thank you for your patience. I'm sure it was probably hard to park and move around, so thank you. So right now, we have a special person, Fur Grove Elementary Grade Student Silver Minnick, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You, Silver, very nice. Thank you. Okay, we have a few housekeeping things for those of you who are regulars. Here we go. You could probably say this yourself. Do we have any media, members of the media here? You do, raise your hand. We'd like to know who you are. Okay, anybody online? Okay, we're great. Thank you. Please mute your cell phones. And if you are wanting to speak during public participation for this meeting, not the previous meeting, fill out a card and we'll, we'll get that. Remember to turn the mics on and off when you speak, directors. And also just this evening's honorees for the awards, the students and the teachers. If you'll just come up afterward, after the awards presentation, we'd like to get a picture with you and your awards with the board members. And right now, we get to welcome our very special, awesome Fur Grove Elementary Principal Katrina Hansen.
Good af, good afternoon. Yes, my name is Katrina Hansen. I'm principal here at Fur Grove. This is my fourth year and welcome. I want to thank our school board for all the work, the tireless hours and the dedication that you give to our students and staff. You are much, much appreciated. So thank you. Second, I want to thank my staff for being an incredible team. The collaboration, compassion and dedication to making Fur Grove a place where students, staff and families feel welcome is noticed by many. And finally, I want to thank our crew that put up the artwork and decorated our gym. They did a lot of work. They were redecorated a little bit. Some of us had some fun patterns on our pants, but thank you. So it looks amazing. All right. Next slide, please. So our strategic plan provides a great reminder for our community that we keep kids at the center of our work. Because ultimately, we want and continuously strive for our students to receive the care, support and instruction needed for their most successful futures. And ultimately, that work starts here at elementary school. So next slide, please. So our Fur Grove vision states that Fur Grove is a safe welcoming school where students, families and staff and community are part of our Fur Grove family. All are valued, treated with respect, involved and united with a focus on learning, focused on high standards and provide opportunities to celebrate success. Students, staff and families are excited about learning and are excelling academically and socially. Our students will leave Fur Grove prepared for the next steps with a strong foundation and a focus on serving our community. Next slide, please. So our data, our current data. And so for this year, our students have already shown growth in a variety of assessments. We've increased our I-ready results by 15, a 15-point increase from the beginning of the year. While we aren't happy with 39% of our students, our third through fifth graders passing the OSAS last year, the state assessment, we are consistently looking at our data and address the areas of struggle for our students and plan strategically to address those areas of weakness. We are constantly looking at that data and making strives for better results. For math, our similarly, our data has shown a 15-point increase with our students over this year at the winter benchmark, while also reducing our at-risk students in math by 15 points. And similarly, we are not happy with a 31% meeting the state standards last year for third through fifth grade. However, we are working collaboratively to increase meaning-making at all grade levels, not just third through fifth grade. And for path to graduation, our attendance, we are currently at 65% of our students attending regularly or 90% or more of the year. We ended last year with 58% of our students considered regular attenders. And right now, we're sitting at about 63%. So we are, we're on our way. Next slide, please. So our goal for this year for the OSAS is that we'll have 39% of our students meet in reading, 31% meet in math. And our goal is 58% of our students to attend regularly and we are already above that. And let's see, for target data. Nope, sorry. I had an extra slide in there. And so, sorry, our target data, 66% of our students will meet tier one standards. 45% of our three through five students will meet or exceed the state standards in reading. For math, 56% will meet tier one and 36% will meet in the state standards and we'll have 63% attend regular. Sorry. So our plan to meet those goals, I'm not going to read all of the bullet points here, but we are collaborating with our learning specialists or special education teachers, our E L A leadership team to review those practices and strategies that help our students succeed. We are participating in site visits with a focus on in, making in the moment decisions, using formative assessment, continuing our professional learning that allows for that collaboration and growth. And we have regular opportunities to review data with grade level teams and adjust those groupings as necessary. For math, again, just participating in that professional learning, collaborating with each other. We have a math leadership team that we provide conversations throughout the year. We visit classrooms. We're constantly looking at different ways to increase that sense, sense-making in the classroom. And then for path to graduation, so we share the attendance data regularly in my morning announcements. On Mondays, we sort of celebrate the grade level that was on top for the week before and just kind of have a more of a focus on attendance. And I feel like it's working this year because we are definitely seeing an increase in overall our students attending. And that's what I have for you today. Any questions? Yes, Brad.
So I got a little confused here. So this data from last year on math was 31%, was that correct?
Yes.
Now, so then you, you mentioned that there's been a 15% increase
in
from the start of school to now?
So we do I-ready math or we do an I-ready diagnostic where all of our students K5 take an assessment online for math, which is different than that OSAS, different than the state assessment. So when we started the year, we had, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but when I, when I did my calculation, we have seen a 15% increase of students at benchmark, also reducing 15 points of students. It was a 15 point, not 15%, but we had 15 points increase and decrease.
So your goal for this year is to go from 31 to 36, which is five, I'm not, I'm on, on the goals in math. So that's a 5% increase.
And that's for the state assessment.
State assessment. But do you have a feeling what, that it's going, it could be better than 5%? Based on?
I, I would love to think that, yes, I would, but I it just kind of state testing is hard. It is a very intense test and we do a lot of work, not teaching to the test, but we give our students opportunities to, we're, you know, we have some resources that allow students to answer questions kind of in a similar format that they're asked in the state assessment. And so our students do practice on that to kind of get used to that format. But as far as whether or not I have a prediction, I, I want, I want a 20% increase. It's a different test. It's a totally different test. Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions?
I was just taking notes. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure being here. Thank you for hosting us.
Of course.
Can I ask a late question?
Yeah, of course.
Because attendance is so important to success, how do you celebrate good attendance here at Fur Grove?
So every Monday morning, when I do, I do announcements with my whole Fur Grove community in this room at breakfast. And I will announce and I do a weekly newsletter for my staff and I kind of let them know who had the most students attending that week. Second grade is really our kind of powerhouse, like they have kind of led the way. But you know, other grade levels have come up and down, but, and so we just, that is one way that we celebrate. That's the biggest way really, is just sort of identifying which grade level is is rocking it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Principal Hanson.
Thank you.
Okay, I just want to remind you one more time, if you're wanting to have any comments during public participation, now's your last chance to fill out a card at the back. But now we have our wonderful Roseburg High School leadership team. We have Spencer Bingham and Emma Rethwell. But now we have our wonderful Roseburg High School leadership team. We have Spencer Bingham and Emma Rethwell, and we are excited to have you guys. Take it away.
Okay, so I have to be honest, I, I walked in this room and I saw a meeting going on and I was so scared. I, I was like, I was like, I'm never getting invited back here again. But um, yeah, so planning is officially underway for the last dance of the year, prom.
And so this year's theme is going to be a night under the lanterns, inspired by the Disney movie Tangled. Prom will be held at the fairgrounds on April twenty-sixth, so get ready for a magical night.
Leadership applications are also closing this Friday, and we're super excited to meet everyone and all the incredible students that are going to be a part of next year's leadership class as they are going through the interview process.
And speaking of leadership, we've had such a great time spending time in the middle school leadership classrooms, and we're planning one more visit to Fremont and Jolene before the end of the year.
Right now, I guess we're kind of in the calm before the storm. We're uh, getting ready for events like Homegoing, Volley Buff, Senior Family Brunch, Staff Appreciation, Prom, and then of course, graduation.
In class, we've been working on building leadership capacity while also preparing for the super busy and exciting end to the year.
We're also really proud to share that the leadership uh, group was able to give out thirty-five hundred dollars in club grants. Um, so we can't wait to see how groups like Link Crew and Robotics put those funds to good use.
Our track and field team is preparing for their home invitational this Saturday. It's a big one. Twenty-seven teams from all over the Pacific Northwest will be traveling to Finley Field to complete in the Twilight Invitational.
Softball is absolutely crushing right now. Uh, as of last week, our girls are ranked number three in the state with, I think still an undefeated six and O record.
Baseball is off to a strong start too. They've had several home games during spring break, and varsity currently holds a four to two win streak, ranking them fourth in the state. Their next game is April fifteenth at home against Sheldon.
Shout out to our girls golf team who've taken third place in three big tournaments already. Uh, they'll be playing again tomorrow in Cottage Grove.
The boys' golf team has also been traveling across the state and finding great success.
Our tennis teams are working hard and hoping for dry courts this weekend. They're hosting over ten, ten teams in a home tournament.
Let's not forget lacrosse. Both boys and girls teams are having great seasons. The boys recently won their second home game against Rag, and big congrats to Jacob Michael who signed up with the Northwest Nazarian University to play college lacrosse.
Both lacrosse programs are also giving back by refereeing and running clinics for youth players in the community.
And cross all sports, our student athletes are staying busy, whether it's football workouts after school, club sports, or year-round wrestling. They're putting in all the work.
AP tests kickoff early May, so students are getting ready for exams and everything, from everything, from calculus to Eng- English literature, which is pretty terrifying.
The spring term at UCC started right after spring break, and students are taking advantage of the chance to earn free college credit in classes like human geography and calculus.
FBLA State was last weekend and everyone did super good. There's, I don't know the number, I think maybe six people that qualified to go to Nationals. So that's pretty cool. And then I guess something else to see which isn't at the high school, but we were able to take the middle school up as well. And I think that, you know, we're able to kind of teach and mentor them in some events, and so a lot of them are also able to go to Nationals as well.
Our senior CTE students also had the chance to participate in a signing day at Uncoa Community College, celebrating their future plans.
Before spring break, HOSA hosted a Red, Red Cross blood drive, and we were able to collect forty-six units of blood, which is enough to help save a hundred and thirty-eight lives. So that's really, that's really cool.
And last but not least, the band program spent part of this last week in Disneyland, participating in musical clinics with Universal Studios. And yes, they got to enjoy some rides too.
Uh, so we've, we've all been pretty busy and getting ready for, I guess, the, the closing chapter of the year. So thank you guys so much. And if you guys have any questions.
I do. I have two.
Perfect.
First of all, you guys rocked it. You're awesome.
Thank you.
So glad you guys do this. What is HOSA? What does that stand for?
Help Occupation Students of America.
Help Occupation Students of America. Okay, awesome. And thank you. And then the other one was briefly, what is the Link Crew?
So Link Crew, it's kind of like a hybrid between a class and a club. So it's not, you know, an actual class it's taking part, part in the day, but essentially it's kind of um, sophomore through senior uh, group that's kind of helping integrate freshmen. And so, you know, there's things throughout the year where, you know, you're, so you're checking in on kind of the group of students that you were given at the beginning of the year. And then also uh, Link Crew's kind of, who runs orientation for freshmen. So when they're walking through, um, you know, it'd be like essentially, say, say us are both, uh, I guess like the, the supposed to be the responsible ones. And we're given like maybe eight freshmen. And so we kind of just, you know, pick them around and, and answer any questions they might have. And then we're responsible to kind of check in with them throughout the year. Just, you know, see them wave them, wave at them in the hall. So I think it's just kind of a cool thing that we do to, you know, help the freshmen, you know, bridge high school a bit easier.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, any other questions?
Um, so how are you doing with that? With, with the Link Group? Are you, I mean, do you have a group of freshmen that?
Yeah, yeah. So um, there, there's a couple of kids that, that I still talk to. And I think that's, that's pretty cool. I mean, I remember uh, Link Crew this year, there was a kid in the class that was sitting in the back playing Fortnite on his phone. And so I took his phone and I was like, but that, but that kind of just had like a little like silly bond that we were able to kind of talk about. So every time I, I see him, I'm, I'm able to say hi to him. So I think that the Link Crew, I think is a really cool thing.
Yeah, I think that would be an awesome thing to really promote and, you know, keep that going because any connections make such a big difference.
Yeah, and there, there's quite a bit of kids that do it. It's, it's a pretty, I mean,
It's a healthy.
The exact number, but there's, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of students that participate in it.
Also I had a question on what, what is the interview process for leadership applications? I mean, you actually sit down with people and have them?
So the last um, week or so, we've been collecting applications. And so they have to fill out an application and then they have to, you know, take three uh, letters of recommendation. So they have to get three letters from teachers. Just, you know, kind of saying like, do you recommend the student to be a part of leadership? Because, you know, it's not just a class. It's, we're given a lot of freedoms, but you know, there, it's not, it's not given, it's earned. And then once those applications are, are all in, um, there's a group of us in leadership class, uh, you know, seniors and our advisor that will go through the applications and then we'll bring the students in and they'll come in and it will be a, a sit-down interview, just kind of asking them what they envisioned their next year to be and, you know, kind of what they're looking for. And then we'll take that and then I, there's a cap on how many students are allowed to be in the class. So. Yeah, that's what we'll do. And then also on the application, you're able to kind of talk about if you're wanting slash interested to run for a position. So I think there's six or seven positions which are executive council. Um, you know, like president and all of the uh, the class reps and treasurer and all that. And so in the application, they're actually saying if they want to do that. And then they're able to, to run for those positions at the end of this year.
Well, that's good. You're, you're getting experience interviewing.
Yeah.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate it. You guys did a wonderful job.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and now we are going to have our student and staff recognition. And uh, just a reminder that when we're all finished with the awards, if you would bring your award forward for a big group shot, we would appreciate that. So right now we have Director Anne Krimmets. She's going to be presenting the student awards.
Well, thank you all for coming out tonight. And this is one of our, thank you. One of our favorite times because we get to um, brag on, on you guys. And uh, we want you to know that we, we do look forward to rewarding you too with our congratulations for a good job that you've been doing. So the first one today is um, one of right here, Fir Grove's fifth grader, uh, Cyrus Charles. Yeah, family and, and teachers. And if you want to, is this a good place right here? Over here. We're going to have you come right over here towards the middle if you would. Encircle that young man. Okay, I'm going to tell you a little bit about uh, Cyrus. Um, he's a very focused on task student who consistently offers thoughtful and relevant feedback to both his peers and teachers. He approaches his education with dedication and takes it seriously, demonstrating a strong commitment to all of his learning. He's also willing to collaborate with others. That's a great skill. And Cyrus works well with anyone on any task. His exceptional attitude and teamwork skills make him a well-respected member of his class. Whether it's tackling assignments or supporting his peers, Cyrus gives his best effort in everything he does. So good job, Cyrus. Fir Grove is proud to recognize him for his hard work and positive contributions to the school community. So let's congratulate Cyrus. Next who we want to honor is Haley Maxwell. She's from Jolene. All right, a little bit about Haley. She's an incredibly enthusiastic and talented student. She's always comes to class with a smile on her face and a hey, how's it going for her teachers? Haley is detailed oriented and always completes her work by going above and beyond. Teachers appreciate that Haley is willing to help others around her and be a real team player. She also brings enthusiasm and pos- uh, positivity to her class and has a deep desire to learn and share all of her newfound knowledge. She is a positive role model and friends with everyone in class, and teachers count on her to provide not just base knowledge, but also all of her insightful thoughts on the subject matter. So let's congratulate Haley. Now we're moving up to the high school and we have Emma Rethwell. Line up, family and staff. Okay. Emma, she's a remarkable student and has an inspiring, she's a, an inspiring leader in her classroom. She's kind, conscientious, and determined, always supporting her peers and fostering a positive learning environment. Her adaptability and group projects and strong time management skills allow her to produce high-quality work while uplifting all of those around her. Emma's perseverance is especially evident in her public speaking journey. Hmm, good for you. Initially struggling though, she pushed through with determination and went on to deliver a flawless speech. In writing, she applies the same dedication, constantly striving to improve her quiet leadership and encouragement, making her truly uh, deserving of our recognition. So we recognize you and congratulate you, Emma. Okay, um, now we're moving on to the high school and we have uh, Esten Barney. And he is a senior. It's nice we're catching seniors before they slip out of our, out of our hands to congratulate you. You just got in under the wire here. So Esten exemplifies the ideal student every teacher aspires to teach. Diligent, compassionate, genuinely committed to both his academic pursuits and personal development. He approaches challenges with remarkable resilience and determination, never shine away from difficult tasks, whether it's in academics or all of his extracurricular activities. His kindness distinguishes him, always willing to assist his peers. He cultivates a welcoming and inclusive atmosphere. Esten always offers insightful contributions that enhance our discussions in class and his leadership skills and open-mindedness truly embody the values at RHS. So we appreciate you, Esten. Congratulations. Six six. Okay, and last um, but not least, here is Tyler Ott. And. Well, Tyler's a creative one here. He's remarkably creative and kind-hearted individual whose passion for art shines through in everything he does. Currently enrolled in Fine Arts III, he is dedicating himself to building an impressive AP art portfolio. His creativity knows no bounds. He's uh, his um, art portfolio is going to be centered around unique characters that he has developed himself. He, his ability to bring ideas to life is truly inspiring. Beyond his artistic talent, Tyler is a genuinely great person. Always ready with a kind word and a good sense of humor that brightens a classroom. His positivity, positivity and dedication make him a joy to have in class, and he's a very valued peer. Congratulations, Tyler. We'll have um, all of you come back up once more for a, a picture with all of the board, if you'd like.
And now we're going to celebrate a couple of teachers with a Crystal Apple Award. First, we have Jenny Carpenter from Fir Grove Elementary. She's teacher on a special assignment. Also known as TOSA, so we'll get that. So Jenny has worn many hats at Fir Grove, from being an instructional assistant, a second and fifth grade teacher, and her current role as the school's esteemed teacher on special assignment, TOSA. In each position, she has excelled, but it is in her TOSA role where her creativity and flexibility truly shine. Jenny has an. Jenny has an incredible ability to build strong connections with students, motivating even the most reluctant learners to tackle challenges they once thought impossible. She works closely with staff, celebrating successes and supporting areas of growth. Her dedication to making Fur Grove a place where kids want to be is truly appreciated. Fur Grove is so grateful for her continued commitment to the school and community. And her crystal apple says, "Our community greatly benefits from your compassion, creativity, and innate kindness." Congratulations, Jenny. Our next award is also a Fur Grove Elementary School. Skills trainer, Terry Wetzel. So when the opportunity arose to hire a skills trainer, Terry rose quickly, rose to the top of the list as a must-have for this position. What a wide range of experience in various roles within our district. Terry has honed the skills that make her so effective in this role. She is creative, crafty, motivating, and consistent, striking the perfect balance between holding high expectations and adding just the right touch of salty silliness. I'd like to be her friend. Anyway, Terry works closely with staff to support both student behaviors and academics while always celebrating student success. Fur Grove is so grateful for her dedication and her exceptional ability to build meaningful relationships with both kids and adults. And her crystal apple says, "Crafty, sassy, giving, and joyful, a true source of inspiration." Congratulations, Terry. So if the award winners would all come forward with your awards, we'd like to get, we'd like to get a photograph with the board. And then after that, we'll take just a, you're welcome to stay if you want, but we'll take a brief recess for those who don't want to stay and need to get kiddies to bed or whatever. So. I might call him, right? Okay. Thank you. We're going to continue our meeting. We do have a public participation. We do, oh. Okay. Yeah, okay, that's good. We're still missing one. Two. Well, we'll
We still have quorum.
Take a little bit of a, oh wait. Okay, okay.
And we'll start with.
Uh, no, we, we have, we have one. Yeah. Okay, sorry about that. I should have looked around the table a little better. Anyway, we do have someone who would like to speak during this public participation. They will have two minutes and Assistant Superintendent Michelle Nie will give instruction.
Dylan Williams, you're invited to come up to speak. Mr. Williams, just as a reminder, the timer will start for two minutes. When the alarm goes off, please wrap up your comments.
Understood.
Okay, perfect.
Good evening, everybody. How are doing? Hi, everybody. Everybody online. I stand before you today as a concerned parent for the closure of Roseburg Virtual School. I just found out about this last week. It was very abrupt. I will continue on track with what I've written, so I don't get off key. Roseburg Virtual School is a pioneering hybrid educational institution that has fostered a unique and enriching environment for our students. Is with urgency that I counter the proposed closure of the school. The decision that I've come to understand stems from a budget deficit, but has left parents and guardians blindsided with little time to seek alternatives or provide solutions. This hybrid model where students engage in online learning from home and attend school in person for two days each week represents where the parents involved, the future for their children's education. It not only minimizes overcrowding in traditional public schools, but it offers a sanctuary where students can focus on their studies free from the stresses and distractions. Particularly bullying was a moment that parents shared with me before I decided to come here. I know teachers do what they can. It's hard to keep eyes on as many students as there are. Parents have witnessed firsthand the impact of this approach. It allows students to thrive academically, build confidence and competence that will serve them well throughout their lives. Additionally, it's worth noting that the parents of Roseburg Virtual School have consistently expressed their commitment to online education over traditional schooling. This preference demonstrates the value that they place on the hybrid model. If the school closure moves forward, the district risks losing funding for each student that decides to enroll elsewhere outside of the school district, which everybody knows it's a very specific amount. There it is. That went fast. I have more to say. I know that this is kind of the first that's been brought up. I don't know if any has been, been able to have a vote on it. This is the first meeting I've ever attended to, so I apologize for the informality of me speaking out of time.
We would, what you can do and what we would really appreciate is if you would email your comments to us.
I'd love to.
Because we would really, that way we can really get it all and see your, your whole heart in this.
Yeah, I thought I had it timed down, but I guess I got off comment a little bit. I do appreciate your opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Corden, would you please cover the review of the agenda and communications to the board, please?
Sure will. In terms of the review of the agenda, the agenda remains unchanged since its publication with one exception, and that is in the consent agenda now includes a request for leave of absence for the 25, 26 year. That's noted in your consent agenda. In terms of communications, I just want to thank the staff. It's always great to be in buildings. We love it. Thanks to everybody who helped make this what is both a gym and a cafeteria, a busy space here at Fur Grove into a super inviting place. Always great to see student artwork and, and, and and the, what our teachers are, manifestation of what our teachers do with our kids. That's great. I did also just want to take a minute and just publicly thank the board for your collective efforts and supporting our community, our students, and our staff, our parents. I've been reminded, I was reading recently something from Oliver Wendell Holmes, who was Supreme Court Justice back in the early 1900s. He served on the Supreme Court for nearly as long as Rod served on the board, actually, 30 years. And was another public servant I've thought a lot about. And he said this, he said, "The noblest service comes from unseen hands." And I just want to publicly let the board know how appreciative I am. Most people that don't get a chance to work directly with the board just don't see the work that a board puts in. It is volunteer service at its best and its finest. I just want to publicly thank the board for the work that you do consistently on behalf of students and, and staff and community. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Corden. You have the consent agenda. You've had that. And I just want to kind of review what's in it. We have recommendation for hire, the license side, recommendation for hire, the administrative side. And also included as Superintendent Corden said, we have a request for a leave of absence. We have notices of retirement and resignations. That was on page 32. And we have gifts to, gifts to the district from Douglas County Cultural Coalition and State's Industries who generously donate, donated to Joe Lane Middle School and also the Roseburg High School respectively. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is listed.
Thank you, Director Hamerson. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Great. All those opposed? Great. Motion carries. Now we have Resolution 242513, National Teacher Appreciation Week. Vice Chair Cotton, would you please read the resolution?
I will. I do have the honor of reading the resolution. And finishing up 31 years on the board, I think that's 31 years I've been able to help recognize her wonderful teaching staff and I appreciate it. Appreciate them very much. It's Resolution 242513. It's National Teacher Appreciation Week coming up. And it's, whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely different backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and I might add, spending their own money on supplies. Whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of Roseburg Public Schools proclaim May 6th through the 10th, 2025 to be Teacher Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Board of Directors of Roseburg Public Schools encourage all members of our community to join with it and personally express an appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Adopted on the ninth day of April, 2025.
Thank you, Director Cotton. I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution, Resolution 242513, National Teacher Appreciation Week as presented.
Go move.
Okay, we have a first.
Second.
We have a second. Great. Any discussion?
Discussion.
I just want to say that the connection to student success is our teaching faculty. We have lofty goals and they are very important and they're set school-wide and district-wide. But in the classroom, teachers are the ones that make them happen. And we have great faculty in the school district. We're lucky of that. And also we, I recognize, I think we all recognize that our effective teachers put a lot of extra time into their job.
You, Director Cubic. So now we will vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Directors, I will remind you to please sign this resolution before you leave this evening. Thank you. And now we have an opportunity to approve the Nutrition, Nutritional Services Management Company. And we have the ever-efficient Warehouse and Purchasing Manager, Denny Austin, to lead this request.
The file for nutrition services is quite heavy generally. But I've only brought it along in case you have specific questions. The memo sent to the board should have everything that you need for the decision to move forward. But if you have questions, I'll open, open up my bag and we can look at specifics.
I just wanted to, to let you know how much I appreciated the write-up that you had sent to us. Does it, it really walked us through the process more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Austin, I don't want to give you the opportunity to take up a lot of time, but I hate for you to go away with what is the show and tell in that bag.
So, so no show and tell. This is the file that gets generated every time we go out for a one-year contract for food services. But you will be also approving the one-year contract that has the rider that you can renew the contract for four years, one year at a time. And then this is the, the response that Sedexo sent to us, and it's similar to the responses that came from all of the vendors that proposed to the district. So it was a challenge for the evaluation committee to come up with the vendor, but I think that they scored highest of the four companies that responded. So I think they deserve to continue the contract for Roseburg Schools.
Thank you.
I had the pleasure of serving on as one of the, whatever we call it, you called us. Evaluated. You've called me worse, but evaluators. And they were above, in my opinion, and I scored them that way, were definitely the the ones to keep. I think overall they've done a great job. Had a little hiccup last year. I tried to squeeze a little bit more out of them, but they, they've done well and I look forward to, they've got a great hand over there. So they, from my perspective as a director on the board, they were by far the team, the company to give it.
Thank you, Director Leone.
Yeah, um, you know, with the, with the national changes that happened politically and all that, as far as nutrition is concerned, are, are we seeing anything coming down from, from a national level or even a state level for changing any of our nutritional? That, that, that big file of yours?
You know, I probably not the one to speak to that, although shortly after we received the, the packet that ODE sends to us, the school lunch program through ODE develops the template that we use to go out for food service management. They sent an update to the National School Lunch Program that came from the federal government. So yes, it's, there are things that are changing. And as with anything that is related to students and student health, they are always looking for the best new method to deliver that product.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve Sedexo USA as Nutrition Services Management Company effective July 1, 2025 as proposed by the evaluation committee.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Shirkcliffe. All those in favor? Oh, wait, discussion? Do we have discussion on this? I think we kind of already. I'm just kind of happy personally that we will get to keep Lauren. So all those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Great. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Austin. Okay, we are moving now into item number four, Memorandum of Understanding, which is MOU. RHS Advanced Medical Pathways Annex, which we're calling AMPA at Umpqua Community College. You have a copy of that, the blue sheet. You've had it earlier, but now you've got a blue copy. Our superintendent has been working diligently with UCC President Dr. Rachel Pokrant in creating a joint MOU with the UCC Board of Directors to facilitate the design and build of an approximately 4,000 to 5,000 square feet Roseburg High School Classroom Complex as an annex to the UCC Medical College. The AMPA will provide RH students, RHS students with robust academic, technical, and real world knowledge, skills, and experience that creates pathways and opportunities for their career development. With the proximity to UCC's Medical College, RHS students will benefit from the medical college professional, professional connections, resources, and equipment. In return, UCC will benefit from the AMPA through the high school students' early engagement and interest in the medical field and medical college. It is anticipated that many of the RHS students will continue their education after graduation at UCC. This MOU is intended to recognize the parties' committed partnership to work together, relying on their common interests and to establish a mutual understanding of the party's objectives by way of creating an AMPA project plan, which will include a legal framework for how the building will be funded and contract terms for the design. for how the building will be funded and contract terms for the design, build, management and operation of the AMPA as well as address the party's intent regarding ownership interests of the AMPA. Superintendent Corbin, would you like to add anything to this?
Uh, no, thank you, Chairman. Think the board's been anticipating this MOU. Board voted unanimously to support this pending the development of this MOU, and I think this reflects the board's interest. UCC's interest and the intent of what really will be a community transformation project as we think about our students having an opportunity to have learn here, grow here, work here and live here in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed MOU between RPS and UCC as presented. Hey, thank you so much. Director Krimmets has entertained the motion. We have a second. Thank you. Any discussion?
I'd like to third that motion.
Like the third the motion. Okay, that's great discussion. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. The motion carries. Moving into committee reports, Vice Chair Rodney Cotton and also Chair of the Building Insights Committee, would you please give us your report?
Very short. We met on the fourteenth to review the MOU, which we just approved. That's off and we also like the committee is grateful for adjustments. Oh, I'm sorry. The committee is grateful for adjustments and improvements that Director Cubic made to the district's long-range facilities plan, and that will be presented to the board in May? In May. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. I chair the Student Services Committee. And great, wonderful. So the Student Services Committee met on March fourteenth to discuss the district's behavioral support work. Student Services leads a team of three behavioral specialists who support students, staff, special programs, teams, parents and the district as a whole. The team's goal is to provide student opportunities for success by developing and implementing behavioral interventions, providing support for classrooms and the program, creating support for students based on their individual needs, ensuring students have the opportunity and ability to be an active participant in their learning and ensuring that students are in the least restrictive environment. The team's efforts include checking in at schools, attending meetings, including IEP and five oh four meetings, creating student support plans, providing support in classrooms and completing student observations. I particularly enjoyed learning more about the details of the roadmap, roadmap to the development of a behavior support plan, BPS. BSP, excuse me. We look forward to learning more about the service of our amazing behavioral specialists. And now we have our superintendent's report.
Thank you Chairman. I've got a slide deck I'll put up here real quick. Let's see. Replace. Start. There we go. Very good. All right. Good evening. I have a, I often say short report. It is actually relatively short tonight. And as always, I'll start with our students and what we're doing around care, support and instruction. I might sound like a broken record at times, but I, I just want to go on the record again to talk about how confident I am in this generation of students that we have an opportunity to work with. They're amazing. Undoubtedly, I am confident that this is one of the best generations our country's ever seen of students. We don't hear that enough. But for those of us who have the privilege of working with kids, even sometimes in the midst of challenges in their home, our kids are amazing. They're doing incredible things. I also want to just say too, we have incredible staff that work with kids, dedicated people. It's difficult sometimes to work in education. You know, sometimes you're viewed lately as maybe the problem of why things don't work. And I will just say, I am so thankful for people who choose to be in this space to support our kids. We've got amazing families. We've got amazing community and we've got an amazing board. So I just want to say that I appreciate the collective efforts to focus on the rising generation. At the end of the day, there's nothing more important than focusing on the rising generation. So thank you. I've got a couple of slides here. I often say it could be a hundred slides, but we'll keep this to just a few things. Just to talk a little bit about what care and support and instruction looks like in action over the last couple of weeks here in our district. Slide on the left here, we've had some of our RHS students that were able to go to RUSA, which is the sanitary authority to learn more about career opportunities with RUSA, kind of a unique opportunity there. I didn't have a chance to do that when I was in school, but the kids really appreciated it. You know, they appreciate opportunities like this to see different career paths and different opportunities here in our community and beyond. We had of our, some of our own staff, including Chair Minor here in the picture to the right here. We've got elementary students that thanks you Lauren and Sedexo for hosting our future chefs. Thank you very much. And so just neat to see students a focus on students that not just about how they, how they perform in a test one day, but to think more about the, the talents that kids have, to know them by their name, their talents. And I thought I was, unfortunately I was booked that night, couldn't go, but I heard it was a great event just to see students showing off their talents around, around food and cooking and, and exploring the, the beauties of, of that. Recently, our eighth grade students were able to, to talk to some families who, whose families were impacted by the Holocaust. And on the right here, we've got two of our kids, Harley and Andy, who recently earned OSU's, it's their most prestigious and competitive award called the Presidential Scholarship. It's worth up to about forty thousand dollars per student there. And Go Bees on the side, but don't worry Duck fans, I've got some fee at the end there. You can see the duck there. So great things. Our kids are doing great things and we're proud of them. We're also we also know we have to continue to work to keep up with the needs our kids have and their talents. Wanted to talk just for a few minutes about some legislation. As you know, it's a long session in Salem and at one point I think we had forty-five hundred bills. If there are any legislators that are watching this, I just want to say to you, thank you for your service and you sponsor way too many bills. Luckily, some of these bills are thinning out, but a couple I think it's important for the board to recognize I want to mention tonight. House Bill twenty-two fifty-one, this has got, this has some bipartisan momentum. It's moved to the House for a vote. Now this bill would prohibit students from cell phone use bell to bell. And still a little, there's still some conversation about what this means if, if there's students that have medical needs or students that maybe on IDP or how this exactly works. There's not necessary provision like we've seen in some districts to have your phone put in a like in a packet or a, to have it be put away and not have, not have any cell use, but we're working on that. I think it's important for us to continue to work with our staff and our parents and our students on this as we watch this bill move forward. There are two bills I've talked about in the past. Just want to let you know, these are, these also seem to be moving with some momentum in the legislature. And they're important bills as we think about serving our children. One is, as you're likely aware, Oregon has, I said for a long time, I think, an unconstitutional cap on students who receive special education services, meaning that reimbursement for students when it gets beyond a certain percentage of your students is not reimbursed. And there is a House Bill right now, twenty-nine fifty-three, that would remove that cap for special education funding. We have a wide variety of partners that are helping carry this with us, not just school districts, but different associations and different partners around the state. Additionally, there's another House Bill that would increase funding for high cost disability. This is also really important because in order for us to continue to meet the needs of students, particularly that qualify for high cost disability, this could be students that have that are medically fragile or have significant health related needs. We, it is incumbent on the state to support students and families in this way. And this, this would be more level funding that would be reimbursable for students that qualify for this and have those needed services. Also want to let you know, we've talked about this eleven point four billion dollars or eleven three six actually. This is, we're still waiting and so it's interesting time in which we need to make some budget decisions. And we're anticipating the budget process starting here next week. Yet we still don't have a state budget and probably won't until mid-June. And so you've seen that the, the co-chairs budget I shared with this with you a few weeks ago, the, the joint committee of the Ways and Means did present an eleven point four billion dollar state school fund budget. That's good news. We have an eye on that. We are still waiting for an approved governor's budget. And again, we hope that will come well before the middle of June. But I don't anticipate it likely will, but we're anticipating at a minimum to be at that eleven four number. Want to talk for a few minutes about budget. Mr. Williams, appreciate you being here tonight, expressing your concerns and I, I'll address that just a little bit tonight. We budgets are tricky this time of the year in particular because we need to make decisions. And I know they come, they feel like they come late. I make no excuses for our district or myself, but we're all trying to get a sense a little bit of what's happening budget-wise at the federal level, at the state level. Again, it's a biennial year. And we are working our best as the strategic plan as our North Star to say, how do we make decisions that align with our values, with our stated priorities? And so we, I want to talk about a few of the things we're doing here. Students remain at the center of our decisions. They must remain at the center of our decisions. How we adjust for reductions in the budget though gets complicated. We have made a number of reassignments through attrition and those have happened through retirements and the reassignments. We've made some decisions, I have made some decisions that'll be presented to the board next week at a budget committee meeting. The closure of RVS represents one of those. I think that it's important and imperative for us to realize this, any loss of funding to support students is a challenge. It's a loss for kids. I do think it's important to realize, just from, from a number standpoint, where we've made about two and a half million dollars in, in staff reassignments and reductions. It's been my hope and so far this has been the case that we could retain our staff, but maybe not in their current assignments. So, so far that's been the case, which has been great. And we've had a little, you know, little attrition and concern about people moving. So all that's been good and Michelle's done a great job. Misses to pretend a knee on that. It's important for the community to realize though, we likely should be making additional reductions in people. But we're not. I'm not proposing that. But I think it's really important to be clear about this. The, the, the budget that we presented next week to the board is going to have about two and a half million dollars of our savings applied next year to cover the costs of our deficits. Additionally, a delay in transfers. So for example, we transfer a certain amount of money for major maintenance, vehicle replacement, field placement. My proposal is to not make further reductions in staff beyond what we've done and to effectively hedge next year and this idea. I do acknowledge it's difficult, the decisions that we've made over the last couple of weeks and conversations with people, our staff's amazing, they've been great with this. But it's a challenge. We're going to have to look differently. We have a four point three million dollar deficit as a result of PERS. And we have some of the deficits with some of the federal funding around secure rural schools. I've talked about safe funding. So we do have, we know we're probably in the neighborhood of over six million dollars in reductions we need to make next year. We have to live within a balanced budget. We cannot raise our spending. And so I think it's important that to the board and the community, we talk openly about how we're going to make some of these decisions. And again, I would just go back to our strategic plan, which, you know, we look at what we're trying to accomplish to have that be the focus of what we're working on. We need to, school funding is complicated. People, their eyes gloss over when it's like, what do we spend money on? I know when talking with a number of patrons, people have wanted to just better understand this, like understand how do you spend money, like what? Where else can you save? And what exactly, what, what things, you know, could be looked at? We've recently, and I would encourage our community to look at this, we've, we have a, and I want to thank Chelsea Duncan, who's done a lot of this work and our business office as well. We have developed a budget explainer, we're, we're calling it, to try to help just our, our patrons understand where their, where this tax money is going, like where are these funds going? You know, what percentages in salary and benefits or what, what do we spend on purchase services or supplies? So I just want to let our community know that our intent is to be super transparent about, you know, what we spend. We have a couple of things here. There's some graphs around number of employees we have, what percentage of our budget is in people and different people and different services. So our hope is that we can have a conversation with our community that aligns our strategic plan and that it becomes more clear about how, what we're investing in. I will say this, we still will have resources to make a positive impact for students next year. And it's our, our responsibility to make sure we use those and spend those in the right way. Finally, let me talk about this a little bit. Here's for all you Duck fans. I've got Prefontaine on the right for you. This is a really critical time of the year. As we think about a classroom setting and it was stated tonight well by, by Director Cotton, our, our, our staff does a great job with our kids. And when you're a classroom teacher or a principal or you work in schools, you realize that you, you do a lot of things to set the foundation, to set the routines, to set the expectations, to build relationships with parents, to make sure that we know kids not just by their name, but by their skill levels and their talents and their hopes and their dreams. And so a lot of that work happens and we're looking at assessments and making sure they're getting high quality experiences and they feel connected and they feel like they belong. All those things happen. When we get to the spring, there's oftentimes a sense of like, poof, I'm a little gassed. I hear this from my, one of my kids, like, man, I'm tired dad. Like we're running hard. Sometimes our staff, we feel that way as well. Like wow, you know, it's like you come out of spring rake and you're like, okay, I've got conferences and then yep, you've got one day off. It's Memorial Day until the end of the year. And so we're a go. But I want the board to know and the community to know, and I think also our, our parents to know that this is when we have to do our best work. This, if we think about like the four hundred as an analogy, we'll take Prefontaine, I actually ran the five and ten thousand actually. But really it's in that last lap, if you will. Or at the sixteen hundred or that last corner in the four hundred, we need to lean in. So I just want to publicly invite our, our students, our parents, our staff, our families into working together to have the best finish we can this year. To work hard, to come to school, to make it a priority, to, to really think about like, I know Katrina talked about tonight, you know, to really say let's lean in, we need to do our best work. And we look forward to doing our best work. We know our kids can do our best work. We're trying to look a little bit more about how to engage families a little bit more, about how to strengthen our career pathways a little bit more. We've got online enrollment coming up to really increase those efforts. Prefontaine said this, to give anything less than your best is to sacrifice the gift. The gift I think he talked about was probably his innate talent and he was, had a lot of tenacity. I like this quote because I think the gift is the children we serve. And so to give anything less than our best efforts is to sacrifice an opportunity for kids. And I want to just let the board know, we're committed to have a really, really strong finish, to see our students continue to, to wake up in the morning and want to come to school and to come and have a rich experience and to see their future dreams be realized as they're at school. So thank you for the opportunity for the report tonight.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We're going to move into our Board of Education reports. Directors, I'll start with you. Director Shirkcliff?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, Director Leonie. Director Hammerson, who I totally ignored last month. I'm so sorry. You were on Zoom and your hand was up and I didn't see it.
I was ribbing you, but I got nothing this week.
Director Krimmets, nothing else further? Director Cubic?
None tonight.
Director Cotton?
The old man on the board, I always have a couple things. Well, I'm not sure if I'm the oldest man on board, but I always appreciate our superintendent was, when he brings up tough topics, how, how he presents it to us, I think, and to the community. I think it's very important. I, I think it's also important to remind the rest of the directors that we're elected. And so we are accountable. I say to our kids and our staff, but we are most accountable to the citizens of Roseburg Public Schools. That's who we report to. We're not on a board where we have no accountability, where you can handpick somebody to join your We're not on a board where we have no accountability, where you can handpick somebody to join your board. We're elected. And we're elected to do the best job. And one thing that I'm really proud about this board of directors is when we make a decision, we've made it based on the powerful information that our admin has given to us. We make the decisions on the research that we've done ourselves, and we make the decisions based on facts. Not emotions, but facts. That's what our citizens of Roseburg want us to do, and that's why we are so successful. So I just wanted to thank each and every one of you. When you make a decision individually, you always keep those items at the forefront. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Cotton. And I would like to say something. You know, every month we get a student leadership report, and it's incredible what they're doing. But this month, I kind of want to acknowledge something, a thread that I saw, and it was about serving. So we have the middle, the leadership team meeting with the middle school students and then the HOSO where they're adopting them and keeping tabs with them. They shared about the blood drive, how they were doing these things, you know, and saving so many lives. And even like the lacrosse team refing and giving clinics. These are kids who are really busy anyway, just with their academics. But I think that just even reinforces more about our teachers and all of our staff members that we're training up good kids. It's not just about academics, which is the most important. That's why we're called schools. But there's also that balance of giving and serving their community. And I loved it about the leadership, how they have to interview and get letters of recommendation. You know, that's training them for real life for their most successful futures, right? Which is exactly what we're trying to do with our strategic plan. So kudos to them. Yay. I'm very proud of them. So all regular business before the board has concluded and barring any objections, this meeting is adjourned.